In a second. Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Adam Marle?
Here.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Here.
And Mayor Denise McGriff.
I am present, thank you. This evening, we have a number of items on our agenda. Number, the first one being the excitement of the swearing in of folks. But first of all, may I ask you to please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I guess we still have our iPads, but we don't have any other signals, so. All right, so this evening, along with Captain Davis, it is going to be my pleasure to swear into office our new Oregon City Police Captain, Sergeant, and Officer. Would you like to say anything, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Commissioners. We're here tonight to recognize one officer who's getting promoted to captain, one to sergeant, and a new officer. It's really good to see the overwhelming support from family and friends here for these officers because it's a really important job and we're thankful you're here, so thank you. So you guys can come up here, I'll say a few things about them, and then we can get them sworn in.
That'd be fantastic.
Yeah.
It's not too hot in here tonight. Last time we did this, we had, we had a little, little issue with people being too warm.
So Officer Eddie Arrias, Eduardo Arrias, he graduated from Beaverton High School. He worked at the US Infrastructure, where he was most recently supervisor. Eddie's been interested in becoming a police officer since he's been a very young man, and he's living out his dream. Here tonight is his wife, Bianca, his family.
Raise your hand, so we know who you are.
His mom, stepdad, siblings, cousins, family, in-laws. I think there's about 25 here for him, so.
So everybody in that family, please raise your hand, so we know who you are. Hi, thank you.
Next, we have Sergeant Kevin Carlson. He started as a cadet with Gresham and was hired as a reserve officer with us in July of 2011. And then we hired him full-time shortly after that in April 2012. 2015, Kevin went to work for Gresham, and then he realized he wanted to come back to us. And he came back to us in January 2022, quickly became a detective, and he was promoted to sergeant on July 3rd, 2023. Here today is his wife Megan, his daughter Mason, and plus a lot of family and friends.
All right, those folks, raise your hands, so we know who you are. Thank you.
All right, and finally, we got Captain Joseph Pagano. He was hired with us in April 2012. Been a patrol officer, a detective, patrol sergeant. And Captain Pagano was promoted to captain on July 17th, just a couple days ago. Captain Pagano has a bachelor's in science from University of Portland and a master's of science in strategic leadership from University of Charleston, which he just completed. Here tonight is his wife Allison, his daughters Brooklyn and Josephine, his parents Mark and Linda, his in-laws John and Debbie, sister Angie, sister-in-law Sarah, and some nieces and nephews Connor, Scarlett, Henry, and Jamison, along with family and friends.
All right, Pagano family, let's see those hands go up. Okay, thank you.
And that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Well, let's start with our new captain. And you've got your prompt over there. So please raise your right hand, and go ahead and repeat this, please.
I, Joseph Pagano, solemnly swear that I will uphold the law and support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon. I abide by the Law Enforcement Code of Ethics and the Department's rules and regulations while faithfully performing my duties as a police sergeant for Oregon City, Oregon.
Great, thank you and congratulations. We're gonna do a photo. Officer, Sergeant Carlson, raise your right hand.
I, Kevin Carlson, solemnly swear that I will uphold the law and support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon. I will abide by the Law Enforcement Code of Ethics and the Department's rules and regulations while faithfully performing my duties as a police sergeant for Oregon City, Oregon.
Thank you, congratulations. And of course, we save the best for last, right? So here's your prompt here, let's move this over so he can sign his name. Please raise your right hand, Officer Urus.
I, Eduardo Arrias, solemnly swear that I will uphold the law, support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon. I will abide by the Law Enforcement Code of Ethics, the Department's rules and regulations, while faithfully performing my duties as a police officer for Oregon City, Oregon.
Congratulations. So I would love it if the chief band would come up. So we're gonna do our picture, and we'll have Captain Davis in the picture.
I could add one last thing.
Yes, please add whatever.
It's her last day of F.T.A., so.
Who?
Sidney, Sidney Oden. So you'll see her after today, we're engaged.
All right, photo time. Come on, guys.
I'm gonna just shift a little bit to center under.
So we have to like shift to the side of the line?
There you go.
Right here. You can't hold me off like that, so did they over there? Or would I have to take them?
All right. One, two, three. Okay.
Thank you, everybody. Excited, excited, excited. We're glad to see you. Thank you so much. Thank you, families, for coming. We really appreciate you. Really excited to find for us to be doing this. And we're so happy that we have more folks on the streets.
Why are we?
Because it's exciting.
What was, what was that announcement?
Finishing up her training, I think. Some training that she just finished.
Well, that was exciting. And then, no, I mean, this is the boring part for them. They gotta, they gotta go do parties and do all that, so. We'll just give folks just a moment. All right. She's got them up her sleeve. All right. Okay, so we're gonna go back to the regular agenda. And next on our agenda is item 3B, and it is a proclamation for Disability Pride Month. So whereas in July of 1990, the Americans with Disabilities Act was signed into law, and whereas the month of July was chosen to honor the enactment of this groundbreaking law, and whereas it is important to take time to reflect on the disability rights movement and the progress that has been made, and whereas the city of Oregon City recognized that one of its greatest strengths is the diversity of its citizens, and whereas the city of Oregon City believes in the dignity of all disabled individuals, supporting equity and ensuring acts of discrimination, and ensuring that acts of discrimination will not be tolerated, and whereas disabled individuals contribute to our community's success and strength in a great number of immeasurable ways, and whereas disabled individuals continue to face discrimination for something that is out of their control and for being who they are, and they are continued to be a target of violence and harassment, and continue to persist through the efforts of the disabled community and support community agencies, businesses, and individual allies. And whereas discrimination on the basis of disability is often compounded with discrimination based on race, sexual orientation, and gender identity, immigration status, religion, and age, among others. Now, I therefore, Denise C. McGriff, Mayor of the city of Oregon City, do proclaim July 2023 as Disability Pride Month and encourage all individuals in our city to join in celebrating diversity and promoting inclusion and equity, and call upon the people of Oregon City to join with their fellow citizens in recognition of this passage of this important law that occurred in 1990. I will sign this on the 19th day of July 2023. Thank you. And we have a copy for the library, of course. And they're wonderful display. All right, so next on the agenda is citizen comments, and we have two items. And I'd like to take Ms. Dulstrid, please.
Thank you all, like, with no subtitles and no hits. I kinda had to guess when it was my turn. So when we saw the eye contact, I appreciate it. Frank, I have a gift for you. I'm here just to bring attention to gossip that went to, that took us down a little rabbit hole. I've been dying to find out what's going on with the US Bank building because of all the construction on it. I'm thinking, what's going on? I went to my US Bank, asked them, what's going on, you guys? So you kinda have to ask younger people to dig this up. There has been a type 2 LAN, LAN use application, number 22E31AB03000 at 901 Main Street. I have huge compassion for mentally ill. I've had, lived with a Vietnam vet, spent 22 years up at VA Hospital. I know mental illness. I know crisis during those times. I also ran a business in downtown Portland, an old town, for 18 years. I know the value of like neighbors. Even when it's tough around you, you need to have retail begets retail, restaurants beget restaurants. They all drive customers. The application is seeking to turn a very significant piece of retail into a application for a residential care facility for behavioral crisis, for 15-bed short stays for people that are in mental crisis. I know that area. I know that road very well. You need to be near a hospital because that is your first avenue that is taken, not downtown Oregon City. I also know as a retailer, if that popped up across the street from me or right next door, I would be renegotiating my lease so fast you couldn't believe it. And believe me, I'd be getting it for skeleton key prices because no one's gonna be hanging down there. We are now watching the neck of our city, which is the old fiberglass plant, turning into a... I don't know the true word for it because it's never been fully described, but it's certainly not be getting more business, tourism business. That's what we need in this town. That's what we need downtown. We don't need our health and county and state. By the way, this will be state-run. So there's a huge money grab for those wonderful state dollars. It will destroy our downtown. Because, I think you can, you can tell exactly why. Because, because you have a business plan, you bring business people in there. Medical people and medical facilities are usually gathered around each other. That's why we have Pill Hill. Thank you, Vetch, I appreciate it. I think you should speak to your city manager. I don't know when this came up, but it should have been brought to someone's attention immediately. It's been going on for a long time, the remodel. Thank you very much.
Thank you, DeeDee. Deep breath. Question, comment? Okay. Marty Kehoe.
Thank you. I'm a home builder, and I wanted to talk about service development charges. We're doing a project up on Holmes Lane, just down from Malala, and it's 60 townhouses. And the service development charges for the project are almost just slightly under $2 million for 60 homes, which is, which is really heavy. The problem we have now is that in the last year or so, as many of you probably know, there's a banking crisis going on, and there's a financing crisis.
I'm sorry, if I can interrupt real quick. This is one of the agenda items, I believe, that they're gonna discuss during public hearing.
Is it down in our public?
This is the request for the...
There's nothing under public hearings.
Under general business.
Yeah, they don't come up on the agenda later.
Yep.
Never mind.
You'll have your opportunity when we get to that item.
Oh, 9C, okay, sorry. Okay. We'll get you back, sorry about that. Yes, we definitely can hear now, huh? The echo in the room. All right. Excuse me. The break now?
We might wanna take a break while I get the volume better in control. The system has completely crashed. I've lost control of the TVs and the sound. Do other things that I don't have any control over.
And we can't see the PowerPoint presentation. Okay, so let's take a break. I don't know when we'll come back because we have, it depends on what Jacob says. So sorry about that, so hang tight.
Coming back into session from the break and we were getting to the adoption of the agenda and the consent agenda. Oh, excuse me, yes, excuse me, my two colleagues here, so yes, excuse me, the presentation on Inflow and Infiltration Program FY 2022-23 Annual Report Presentation. Mr. Lewis, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Yes, we're here tonight to talk to you about INI or Influence Infiltration. With me here is Kenny, well, I call him, on the screen it says Kenneth, but I call him Kenny Kennedy Schultz, he's our project engineer for this, so I think this is the first time in front of the City Commission. I know he was at a city, at a neighborhood meeting for the McLaughlin neighborhood and he did a great job there, so he's going to present the lion's share of this, he put the presentation together. Also in our audience is Jim Montgomery with Wallace, he's our, he's mainly our project manager, program manager for this, because there's multiple projects within this project, so we're, Kenny's going to present our annual report and in just talking through this a little bit, I'm like, man, did the commission ask us to include a annual report in this program when maybe there was another previous decision that was made on the INI program? And the answer to that was, no, we made this decision to, to produce an annual report because this program is so big and has a lot of checkpoints in contracts per se, in fact, there's a very big contract on the consent agenda related to this, but we really just wanted to help us, keep ourselves on track, so that's why we're doing the annual report and we committed to wanting to give you an update on what's been done and what's coming, so Kenny's going to kind of share a whole lot of that information tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kenny.
All right, being picked up properly? All righty, so just for a very basic overview of what we're covering tonight, in a segment that I hope grows shorter every time I give this presentation, I will give an overview of the program itself, also tell you what our goals and the organization of the, of the program actually are, then go over what we've done to date and what we plan to do. So, starting with INI, we've talked about this a few times up to this point, so I'm going to keep this extremely short. Inflow and infiltration, inflow is when stormwater from a catch basin or a downspout or just any other improper connection makes its way into our sanitary sewer. Infiltration is when groundwater makes its way into our sewer through cracks or improperly sealed manholes. So both of these are problems when it comes to our sanitary sewer, our sanitary sewer system. Essentially, any rainwater that we put into our sanitary sewer pipes has to be treated at the plant, has to go through our pump stations, has to be routed through our sewer pipes, and during the worst storms of the year, up to 95% of our, in the worst case scenario, up to 95% of the water in our pipes is stormwater right now, so this program exists to fix that problem. So, this map is what is the area that our program covers, it also happens to be areas where according to prior monitoring, we have the worst problems with inflow and infiltration. So I assume that most of us here are familiar with the city and this, these areas should not be surprising, they're older parts of town and this is just where our oldest infrastructure is. So this also is the area that is covered by the IGA with Water Environmental Services with Clackamas County, West, and they are providing a funding match with us, so for every dollar that we spend on INI, they're going to give us 33 cents to spend on more INI reduction, and in that way, the program keeps moving forward. So this is something we haven't really talked about much up to this point, but the, the INI program is managed by the city, but it's also very heavily managed by a consultant. So the way program management works essentially is that in a more typical project delivery scenario that you'd see within the city, a lot of the duties that we have assigned to West would normally be covered by city staff, but this is such an aggressive program that has such high goals that we need to bring in some outside help. And so Jim Montgomery, who is in the audience with us tonight, helps me administer the program and basically make sure everything is done consistently, and we also have some senior technical leads at the Wallace team that really just lend a lot of expertise and between the four of us here that are kind of the heart of that INI program, we bring a lot to the table collectively, and so the four of us make sure that the rest of the project team, which is over 14 currently sub consultants, that we're all on the same page at all times, and we're doing a lot of very different diverse goals that were, or different diverse tasks that we're going to talk a lot more about in a little bit. So, given how large and complex that system is that we had to build to do this program management scheme, you might be asking yourself, why do program management at all? And the answer is actually fairly straightforward. The INI program is very aggressive and ambitious in its goals. We have a large budget over the next two years, $21.7 million, which per my memory John is more than most of the other, more than most of the other utility funds are spending on capital individually, and this is just one part of it. Also, the area is quite large, there's 70 miles of pipes to go through, there's 5,600 customers being served in this area, and the target itself is aggressive too. West wants to reduce district-wide INI by 65% by 2040, and Oregon City agrees that that's a good goal that we should sign on to. So, a program to deliver this kind of budget over two years, it has a lot of moving parts. There's a lot of tasks that have to be overseen, it's not just designing projects, it's looking at the sewers, it's doing smoke testing, it's identifying projects before they're even designed, it's coordinating construction, and it's doing all of these things at the same time. So with that many moving parts happening at once, city staff just cannot oversee all of that independently, so we need the assistance from Wallace, and so that's why we've brought this program management plan to you, this annual report, and then the consent agenda item later tonight. So in italics here, program management allows the city to leverage Wallace staff to multiply project delivery capacity without hiring additional city staff. So by approving this program, you're allowing your staff to deliver a lot more work than they could do otherwise, and still provide the other services that we have to provide in the sanitary fund. So the INI program is not the only capital, is not the only capital project in sanitary, and thanks to this, and thanks to this budget item, we can continue offering other services as well in the capital group for you. So this allows us to continue moving other things forward as well. Did I skip a slide? I did. Program goals and metrics, so the goal of the INI program is pretty straightforward, we want to get rid of INI. We want to do that in a method, in a manner that is cost-effective, effective at actually accomplishing that goals, and also equitable. So we want to make sure that we're not putting undue burdens on any individual, any individuals within the city, whether that be areas of town, whether that be any, yeah, basically, we don't want any, any one group of people or any one area to unduly feel the burden of this program at any given time. And the evaluation primarily is by seeing how much peak flow we remove from those storms. So, going through the annual report that I gave you all in the staff report, we've accomplished a lot in the last year. So, one of our biggest accomplishments is actually in assessing the condition of our sanitary sewer. Prior to the INI program, our records of the condition of pipes in our sanitary sewer system was quite spotty and very incomplete, and that's just due to the sheer scope of the entire system. We have a CCTV truck, but even running at full capacity, which most of the time it is, it just does not have the ability to go through the entire sewer and the storm system too, in a timely fashion, and particularly within the timeframe that we want to have video of these pipes. So, we took 41,000 feet of city CCTV data and we combined it with 93,000 feet of consultant performed CCTV to take a look at the pipes and find areas where we have good pipes and bad pipes. And then we also prepared a package for spoke testing, but that wasn't performed this year, that's going to be performed in August. Also, we took that CCTV data and combined it with other metrics such as lateral surveys that have been sent out to people that have been covered with CCTV contracts to date, other anecdotal evidence, priorities from operations staff, and we use that to identify potential priority design packages, and so far, we've identified eight designs. Each of those packages are anywhere between $1 and $3 million each, so we have scoped out a lot of construction to occur within the next few years, and two of those packages are currently heavily under design. An important part of a program like this INI program is consistency. We want to make sure that regardless of which sub consultant is performing the design, which person made the decision to include or exclude a pipe or a particular property from a project, that it was done in a way that is always consistent and based upon standards and sound decision-making. So there are some central documents that we develop that just articulate how the program runs, and then we also put together design standards and a boilerplate for construction standards, so that every single INI program, or every single INI project will feel very similar. And also, thanks to the approval of the private lateral program, we are also incorporating private lateral work into our standards and specifications, and Clean Water Services has had luck with performing a similar type of program in the past, so for a first pass for Oregon City, we're modeling our approach after what they've done, but of course, we expect there to be differences between what they, what works for them and what works, what works for us, so we will reassess based upon performance, like everything else in this program. Flow monitoring, we have seven locations that we set up monitors in to take a look at peak flows and better articulate what's actually going on right now in the sanitary sewer system. And the model hasn't been recalibrated in some time, that is being used to evaluate our efficacy, so that recalibration is currently ongoing, and I expect that the results of the recalibrated model should be available within a month or so. So looking at these same areas for the next fiscal year, we're increasing the amount of CCTV that we're going to be performing between this year and next year. Our goal is to get through the entire program area for assessment, both smoke testing and CCTV inspection by 2026. We want to have a very full picture of the condition of that entire area so that we can better prioritize projects that urgently need our attention. So, we're also going to be performing the smoke testing in August, as I said earlier, just a slight diversion here for a moment, I will take this moment to state that while there is smoke testing going on, please do not call the fire department if you see smoke, it is not harmful and it is not fire. On the other hand, if there's a real fire that you see, please call the fire department. Public announcement over. So, project delineation and design, basically continuing on with what we've been doing at this point, we want to take the other six projects that aren't currently under design right now and finish them by the next fiscal year, and identify an as of yet uncertain number of design projects, and the reason we don't know is actually pretty straightforward, until we see the CCTV footage, we don't know how many projects are warranted out of that new condition assessment. We're going to update standards to reflect our experience, everything that we do in the INI program is always going to be growing, it's always going to be involved, evolving, and we're always going to seek to do better. So that is one of the central tenets of how we're going to run this program. And flow monitoring, we're going to produce the 2022, 2023, and 2023, 2024 monitoring reports in this upcoming fiscal year, and also, this will give us our first chance to take a look to see how some of our INI projects have done at meeting our goals for INI reduction. And then for a more detailed project delivery summary, as opposed to staring at this list, which I will leave up here for just a moment, I will instead go to our map and just simply state, we're going to be focusing mostly in the next year or so on the McLaughlin and Rivercrest and Elyville neighborhoods. Kanema is after that. So, I will happily accept any questions.
Are there any questions? I thought it was very thorough, thank you so much. We're excited about it, at least I'm excited, are you guys excited about it? I think this is a great leap forward for us and it's going to solve a number of problems.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, is there All right, uh, is there anything on item number seven that anyone wants to discuss? Or may I have a motion for adoption of the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
And moved and seconded that we adopt the consent agenda? Please call the rule.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Adam Marl?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell has stepped away. Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor Denise McGrath?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. So we don't have any, um, public hearings tonight under number, item number eight, but we do have a number of items under general business, and I'd like with your, um, permission to move item number nine D to nine A and ask, um, Mr. Williams to come up, please? And Mr. Conklin, do you have the report?
Yep. Um, thank you. Evening, Commissioners. Uh, thank you, Mr. Williams, for coming out tonight, a member of our Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. So tonight, you have before you the proposed first reading of ordinance number 231008 in ordinance to allow the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, or PRAC, bylaws to determine the required number of annual meetings. Uh, staff is recommending that City Commission approve the proposed amend, proposal to amend Oregon City Municipal Code 2.58.050 to reduce the number of Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee meetings. Um, so this really is a reflection of, um, a discussion of the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, which looks at their bylaws and goals to determine if changes need to be made or new items should be added. At the May 25th, 2023 meeting, the committee recommended that there be two changes made to the PRAC bylaws. But in order for that to occur, we must first revise, um, ordinance number 221002. These changes are made to accommodate schedule, city activities, and hold efficient, uh, productive meetings. The vote was 8-0 in favor of the suggested changes, and, uh, due to other parks, other Parks and Rec events, city meetings and schedules, uh, they have found that a minimum of six PRAC meetings annually make the most sense, uh, for the mission of that, uh, committee. The committee chair, vice chair, or Parks and Rec director may call additional meetings as necessary with consensus from the rest of the committee members. Happy to answer any questions, or Mr. Williams, if he has anything to add, or help me answer the questions as well.
Did you want to say anything?
Oh, I believe, uh, that presentation pretty much covered, uh, the extent of, uh, of what we discussed at the PRAC meeting. I think the one thing that was, uh, of note, uh, regarding, you know, whether we have a minimum, minimum of nine, part of the reason for, uh, trying to encourage more participation by PRAC members in other city activities, meetings associated with the parks and, and by potentially reducing the number of overall standard meetings, we may get more participation from individuals in other activities, maybe on the weekend. Um, the other thing we noted was that this last year and a half, we kept running into conflicts with other, uh, important meetings that either staff had to participate in, uh, planning meetings of one form or another, and we just kept hitting those conflicts that made it seem like a minimum of six was, uh, probably appropriate. We retained, as you see, the, uh, possibility that the vice chair, chair, and, uh, parks director can add meetings as necessary, so I think that covers just about anything we would need to do. Um, the second, since there were two items, uh, mentioned that we took up that night, the other one is not part particularly of this proposal, but it's just a change in our meeting times, uh, requesting that be moved in the bylaws from seven to 10 o'clock, moved it to six to nine o'clock, and that seems to accommodate, uh, the committee and the staff's, uh, needs a bit better than what we're currently doing, so, thank you.
You could just put a statement in there saying that we'll meet at a, you know, a time that works for everybody, rather than specifying something, because again, if you want to change it back, you've got to go through.
Right.
You know, as, as time is agreed upon by the committee, that to me would have been a whole lot simpler. So when are, when is, what is your meeting schedule going to be now? Is it going to be every other month?
Uh, not necessarily. It's going to be evaluated on a monthly basis, the previous month, to see what we have coming up, because there are a number of, uh, things that, that don't fit the, we talked about that every other month. Sometimes, uh, having, uh, concurrent, uh, consecutive meetings is better. So right now, uh, we'll be looking at it a month in advance and deciding whether we're going to have a meeting the following month or not. That was what was decided.
Unfortunately, I think that's going to be a little confusing for the public, because they won't know from month to month whether you're going to be meeting or not. So that would just be a comment I would note. Commissioner Smith, please.
I'm confused as to, I, I understand the meeting that took place that the, um, committee voted eight zero, and I understand that the six meetings was discussed as a minimum. If that's the case, then why isn't that what we're changing it to? Because the red line version crosses out any reference to a minimum, and only states that, um, so it basically eliminates all references to any medium, whether it's six or one or zero.
It's, it's.
I have huge concerns about that.
It's, it's attempting to reference to the bylaws, and then the bylaws are going to have the number of meetings in them.
And it says there it's six, which should have been referenced then. Because the bylaws aren't here, then. All I see is the red line version.
The bylaws are going to be coming with the second reading of the ordinance at the next meeting at August 2nd.
It should all be here, because if I look at this, the wording that we're voting on tonight is based on Exhibit A. There's no other wording that references six meetings other than Exhibit A, and it basically scratches out that there's a minimum of meetings at all. I have a problem with that. I also will say that, um, we need more involvement in Parks and Rec Advisory Committee in parks, um, not less. Um, and I concede to six meetings is probably okay, but we need public input into parks, more than any department that I know of right now. Um, and I would also say, I guess I'm concerned that members of PRAC are being, are, are not reading the bylaws prior to becoming members, because if they knew that, they would know going into it was nine meetings a year, and you would know that that is the commitment. So I, I, I find it, either, either people are just not knowing what the commitment is when they start on the, on the, uh, committee and then want to change it later. I don't know. I, I, so I guess I, I want to see it in writing that it says.
You want to hold this over?
Well, I'm not going to vote for it, because I don't think there's enough information here to vote.
Any other comments? Go ahead.
Well, I'll just say, I agree with Commissioner Smith that we need to have more engagement, but I think that part of the reason why this change is being proposed is to do that and to be more outward-facing, uh, toward the community, rather than just staying in the, the commission chambers and having conversations sometimes. Uh, it's also just as effective to get out at the community, be at the concerts in the park and at other community events.
I agree.
At the last, uh, concert in the park, I was talking to, uh, Ms. Sebastian about this, and I was really excited at the prospect of having a more outward-facing, uh, PRAC, which, uh, again, to your point, needing more community input, uh, it's often better for us to go to the people rather than asking them to come to us. Um, I do have, uh, concern, so it was originally a minimum of nine?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I, I don't have a problem with moving it to sit, a minimum of six. I just, I concur with the mayor over concerns about, uh, maybe having the irregularity of determining it month to month, but, uh, for the most part, I, I support this, and I support the vision for what this is trying to accomplish.
Yeah, having been on PRAC, yeah. They don't generally face deadlines the way do, the way other bodies do, uh, and I guess, yes, I agree, we want more public input, but new topics don't crop up all that often. And so you end up at a lot of meetings, having a meeting just because the schedule says you need to have a meeting. So, uh, I can support six meetings a year. Um, and, uh, so that, just to be clear, though, that, the ordinance to approve the bylaws calling for six will come back to us, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I guess I'm questioning why there's no reference to a minimum of six meetings in any of our packet tonight. Because the red line crosses out the minimum altogether, so whether it references or not, we're not seeing the other piece of it.
Is there an issue with, is there an issue of coming back, bringing us both of the ordinances at the same meeting?
No.
Okay.
The by, the bylaws aren't in ordinance.
Right.
That'll just come to the commission to be approved. We have, we're, we're proposing this because we have to change the Oregon City Municipal Code. That's why this is being brought to you in an ordinance with the red line. Um, so right now, chapter, uh, 2.58.010, uh, .050 meetings, specifically in the Oregon City Municipal Code, says the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee shall meet a minimum of nine, at a minimum of nine meetings annually at a time and place selected by the committee. So proposal is to remove from chapter 2, 58050 of the municipal code, so that it would read the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee shall meet at a time and place selected by the committee, and in, um, adherence, uh, with committee, bylaws approved by the city commission. So, the ordinance is to change section two of the municipal code, the bylaws would just be approved under general business. They don't need an ordinance to approve the bylaws.
So we're amending the, uh, the municipal code so that we are able to approve the bylaws? Okay, separately.
I can't, we can't bring the bylaws with six when the municipal code says a minimum of nine.
Right.
And, uh, what's your pleasure? Is there a motion? Respon, whatever, what would you like to do?
Do you want to say something?
Nah, just my formal training is, when one document references another, it's called drill down, and all documents are present for your review.
Right, because we're, 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 we're having to make the assumption that Park's going to bring us back.
Yeah.
Bylaws that say this, and I don't trust that necessarily to happen. I want to see it together and complete package, that's what we have to look at. So, I'm still going to vote no.
We just forward this to the first meeting in August, please?
I couldn't understand you, what, what?
I'm, I'm requesting that we continue this item to the first meeting in August, and we'll bring the bylaws, so that the first reading can occur with the bylaws.
I think that would satisfy everybody.
Oh.
Okay, so we're continuing this?
That's my request.
Dylan? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so in continuing with the, moving the agenda around, uh, I'm going to go back to the agenda and, hang on, just a quick second here, get to my second page. I'm going to move, um, nine, uh, C to nine B. So we have a request for subordination of lien for deferred SDC agreement for Holmes Lane. Mr. Conklin.
Sorry, um, I'll have Mr. Zuck come up as well.
Mr. Zuck, would you like to come up as well?
Uh, so this is a, a request that the city commission received. Um, the developers requested for the city to take the second lien position for deferred system development charges, uh, loan on Holmes Lane development to allow developers' construction lender to take first lien position. Uh, from a financial perspective, Oregon City Municipal Code and Oregon revised statutes preemptively protects the city financial position by claiming the first position in a lien. Staff recommends the commission maintain that first position. Uh, we received a request from the developer on June 23rd of 2023 to take a secondary lien position to the developer's construction lender that may finance the vertical construction. The request was presented to the city commission as written public comment at the July 5th meeting. Uh, the city commission directed staff to present, uh, this request with a staff report at the July 19th meeting tonight. The request is included separately with this report. The developer has been notified of this request, um, I, that this is on the city commission agenda, has been invited to attend, and I believe he is here tonight, uh, since this request would be a deviation from city code. Staff is presenting this request to the commission. Uh, the residential development at 535 Holmes Lane is approximately 3.8 acres to be built, uh, approximately 60 condos. More detailed information on this development can be found on the city's website. The SDCs on the project are approximately 1.97 million. The development, the developer was presented with a system development fees financing agreement on June 6th of 2023 for a term of 10 years at 9% interest, uh, $25,000 monthly payments. This agreement has not been signed as of the date of this report last week. Uh, the city recognizes and appreciates the current challenges, uh, challenging economic environment. One of the risks the city has with this project is that over 500,000 infrastructure required from the builder remains in process. A construction bond is in place from the developer for surety for this work. At present, the city has 15 deferred SDC agreements totaling approximately 1.1 million with deferring maturity dates. Uh, to my knowledge, the city is in first lien position of all these agreements. Um, Oregon City Municipal Code, section 13.20.080D states, "The city finance director shall docket any lien in the lien docket. From that time, the city shall have a lien up, upon the described parcel for the amount of the unpaid SDC, together with both interest on the unpaid balance at the standard legal rate, and any actual cost incurred as a result of the deferral. The lien shall be enforceable in the manner provided by ORS Chapter 223, and shall have priority over all of the liens to the extent allowed by applicable law. Thus, staff holds that all existing SDC agreements have liens that are in the first position." Uh, that concludes the presentation. Be happy to answer any questions. Um, and obviously, we have Mr. Keough here tonight, uh, who, uh, recommend the commission hear from as well.
Did you want to add anything to that, Mr. Zuck?
I think, uh, his presentation was, uh, complete. Thank you.
Okay. Now, Mr. Keough, now we're at the right number. I apologized before. I just looked at your number, uh, number four, so.
No talk?
Yes, go right ahead.
All right, well, thank you. So, uh, the reason we're asking for the city to take a secondary position against the lender, which the, um, the, the SDC would, would be in favor of the, uh, it would be superior to the lender after we complete the project, because we would put a new loan on it, and it would be a permanent loan. It just helps us get financing and get the project started. Uh, otherwise, like I said earlier, with the banking situation the way it is right now, uh, equity is, uh, doubled, interest rates have doubled, and the, the, uh, the difficulty of getting these off the ground is, is, is just massive. Um, and we're, what I'm asking for is just, uh, I, I don't know how much of a difference it really is in the project, in the purpose of things, because we need to, uh, once again, the project will be completed within the year, and then, uh, when we go for permanent financing, the, uh, SDCs will be, uh, would, would have to come first. They're like a tax lien in, that would be in front of any lender. But just for the time period of getting the project completed, uh, it, it, it helps us do it all at once as opposed to building the project out slowly as we, as, as funds are available and as we can do it. So, it, it's a, it's a huge help in a big project like this with, with, with big, um, service development charges. So I'll answer any questions.
I just, I guess, you know, part of where we're, you know, I think the city's coming from is that, you know, we're not a bank. Um, and you're asking us to defer, uh, funding that is basically, you know, we're, we're basically the, the policy people, but basically the deferred SDCs will come back to the city as the project gets completed, and that goes back into the pot to do other projects, which is on behalf of the community. I, I would say, you know, under other circumstances, this might be considered, but this is not the Urban Renewal Agency or anything, they can't bond for liens anyway, so it, it's just tough, because we're not a bank, and that's, that's probably the biggest problem I have with it.
Well, you're deferring anyway, because.
Well, but that, but we have statutory authority to do that.
Right.
Under the ORS.
But you also have authority to, um, you, you also have the authority to, uh, take, to have the SDCs take a subordinate position to the loan, and that's what we're asking. We're, we're, we're definitely deferring. We wouldn't be able to, if we had to pay $2 million in SDCs, we couldn't do the project upfront with the loan, we just wouldn't be able to. But by deferring it, it gives us the chance to do it, but with all of the lenders that are out of the market right now, there's no banks that are loaning money on these projects. It's only debt and equity funds and hedge funds. Nobody, no banks. So instead of paying, you know, six and a half, 7% interest, we have to pay 13%. pay 13% interest in order to get these projects going. It's just, it's just a great deal of difficulty, and all I'm, we're taking advantage of the 10-year deferral, but all I'm asking is that the, is that the, the city take, allow the SDCs to be secondary to the primary lender, and then, then they will become subordinate when the project is, as soon as the project is completed. That's, that's all we're asking.
But it's a lot. So is, Mr. Zuck or Mr. Conklin, it's really not that simple as I, as I understand it.
What do you, I'm sorry.
I said, it's really not that, it's not that simple that after a year, we, we become in, we, we're in first position and then we are subordinate, so.
I, I, you know, I think you, what, what's being described here is that at that point, the construction loan is complete, correct?
It's almost complete.
Think if you can cut the timer off.
It's almost complete.
Gentlemen?
Well, for me, it's pretty straightforward. We've operated under the municipal code and the ORS from a financial perspective. I don't believe in placing us in a subordinate position, period. We've been, I've, I've seen that in private life, and I'm just, I'm not interested. This is, this is a known arena of operations to everyone, and I'm, I'm not willing to make a waiver on it. And I don't believe we ever have historically, and I'm, I'm not prepared to do it tonight.
Mr. Mitchell?
I agree with Commissioner O'Donnell. We, we have an obligation to protect the taxpayers' assets, and monies owed to us in the form of SDCs are, are an asset to the city, and I don't think we should take second position.
Mr. Merle?
I would agree, and I, I don't have much to add. We also need to be, while being mindful of growth, we need to be mindful of the residents who already live here and are dealing with the crumbling infrastructure that we already have.
Mr. Smith?
I move to deny the request. Second.
Yes, this has been moved in a second. I'll add one more comment. I, I, again, I am not unsympathetic to the request. I, I am aware that the property is for sale. That was forwarded to me by another party, and I don't have any issue with that either. Part, part of the thing is, is that this is, this is not something that we have traditionally done. It doesn't mean that we can't do it, but then where does it end? So you ask, then the next person, next developer comes in, and then, then we have the city in a second position for everything. Again, as I said, this is, I'm used to doing, being involved in transactions that involve a jurisdiction being in second position, but it's an urban renewal agency, and that's something that they typically will do with guarantees and that sort of thing. And I guess part of, you know, even though it's all bonded, I, I'm, I'm feeling uncomfortable that there is no other surety that goes along with this. I don't know what the bank is requiring. And I, again, I am very, very sympathetic, but I just feel uncomfortable in putting the city in this sort of position. And I appreciate that you came and asked because we needed to look at this, but I, I'm just uncomfortable.
Al for the vote?
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Adam Merle?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, we appreciate it. I'm so sorry.
No, I understand, and I appreciate your service. Thank you.
All right, so we're on to Resolution number 2321, adjusting solid waste collection and disposal rates effective September 1, 2023. And is that, oh, Dante, please, come on up. Thank you so much for being here. This is the public work show tonight.
So here with me is Will and Pam Bloom from B&amp;B Leasing. Like you said, Mayor, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, my name's Dante Pisadas. Oh, right, sorry.
Is it working?
Yeah, I think it's working. So, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, my name's Dante Pisadas, I'm the Right-Way and Construction Manager for the city. I oversee the solid waste division for the city, and tonight we will be presenting on the solid waste and disposal rates adjustment for September 1, 2023. As I said, Will is here with me. If you have any questions throughout the presentation or after the presentation for B&amp;B or for me, feel free. So I'm just going to go through this. So to begin with, a little overview of our solid waste regulation. Today, we have to abide by state statutes. State Statute 459 allows the city to establish a franchise authority, and State Statute 459A goes over through, goes through all of the different programs. A city our size has to abide by regarding state watershed and DEQ regulations. And then also, because we are in the metro watershed, we also have to abide by the Metro Regional Waste Plan, which also has some connections to this transfer station and has some connections to the programs we implement within the city. As far as our city code regulation, our city code establishes our franchise in Chapter eight point two zero. That was established with B&amp;B Leasing. It is a reoccurring franchise that gets renewed on a seven-year term, and the code also outlines the franchise conditions, rates, how we establish rates, how we, or what type of programs we establish, things along those natures. And let's, next slide. So to establish rates, what we go through is we, the city code outlines the different parameters, the cost of service, anticipated cost of service. So throughout the years, we've added things like recycle plus, added things like food waste. All of those things are calculated to look at the cost of those services, different equipment needs, reasonable rate of return. We worked that out with the county and the hauler, just ensuring that we're all abiding by the same rate of return that the county establishes. We also compare our rates to the other municipalities around the metro area. Our rates here in Oregon City are pretty favorable because of our proximity to different transfer stations and our longstanding relationship with our haulers, or with our hauler. And other things that need to be considered are CPI, local wages, and different beneficial services that the community would like to see. So this resolution specifically is asking for a 9.5% rate adjustment. That is a $2.85 monthly adjustment to a 35-gallon cart size, which is the typical user within Oregon City. Around, I think, 67% of our residents are 35-gallon carts. And then commercial residents, or commercial users, I'm sorry, typically use the two-yard container size, and that container size will be going up $21.81 a month. And that is like, again, it's around 60% of the commercial users use the two-yard container size. Here in the, the little chart, we have the difference in cost breakdown for residential. So as you see, our proposed rate for 35-gallon is 3281. It is the lowest in the metro area. The next closest is Cambie, and I think those are proximity to Metro South Transfer Station is the, the difference in cost there. But also, if you look at it closely, you can also see that the 20, 20-gallon is very low compared to a lot of the other cities. So there's, there's differences in the market there. Next slide.
Can I ask a quick question? You said 65% of the, of the users in our service area are 35-gallon?
It's, it's rough, yeah, but it's around 60 to 65% use 35-gallons.
How many use 20?
I, I don't know that off the top of my head, Mayor. I just had, I, I knew the, the big percentage because the, it's a cost thing. So I will get that information, and I can definitely email it to you.
So I would say that basically, from what I see, the three base, I mean, even though you've got four sizes, I would say the top three are probably equally divided through, throughout the community, and it would be interesting to know what the percentage is. So obviously, if it's 65%, you know, and using 100%, then there are other, other rates are divided between those two, and then probably a small, I don't, I don't know anybody in my neighborhood uses 90-gallon, but, you know, probably, they're out there somewhere.
Very few 95-gallons you. Usually, if you have, like my family, family of five, you, you'll have a 95-gallon, but most people have taken advantage of the lower rate at a 65-gallon or even a 35.
Just furious.
No, it's fine. Thanks for the question. So reasons for the rate adjustment, the main, the big main reason is Metro's transfer station is raising their rates. They will be raising their rates effective, oh, it's already effective, July 1. The rate change is 11.2%. They are going from $123.45 a ton to $137.30 a ton. That is the big kind of cost burden because we are doing around 23,000, or 23,000 tons annually in Oregon City that we go to the transfer station with. Other things are the fuel price increase. Everybody has a car and sees how gas is expensive nowadays. And then the recycle, recycle market has gone up in the last year, year and a half. So there's, there's the whole transferring our recycle to different areas and how that cost affects our solid waste hauling. And then the Consumer Price Index is 6%, 6.5% in 2022. And I think other things are labor cost and things like that. So. Final, final slide is, so we have new services. In the last couple of years, we've brought on a couple of new services in recycle plus that allows homes to call in B&amp;B Leasing, and they will come out and do a pickup of these items. The items are textiles, clam shells, plastic films, plastic bags, fluorescent bulbs. We're also picking up batteries in the recycle cans. Those go in a plastic bag and get taped into your recycle can, and those will be picked up also. And along with our city code of food waste requirements for businesses, the group one implementation was March 2022. Group two and group three implementation will be coming at the end of 2023, December. So those are the main reasons for our cost rate adjustment. If you have any questions, B&amp;B's been our hauler for a long time. I think they update a lot of the rules and regulations that we have, but I think they've still done a good job keeping up our services and keeping up our programs, and we're all working together to get within state regulation and metro regulations. So if you have any questions, please let us know.
I'll start down at the, to my left?
There's not been an increase since 2021, so if you spread that nine and a half percent over that two years, it doesn't seem unreasonable to me. I want to say one thing, and I, and I'm not suggesting to upset the apple cart tonight, but when I look at, at something that I would love to see considered, when I look at the sizes, the chart that you had up with the different size containers, it's almost like we're giving people an incentive to throw away more because the price of the container, as the containers get larger, there's a very little difference. I would love to see some way that there's more of a penalty for throwing away more garbage. I was just doing some quick numbers. That, that 23,000 tons, that's, that's 1,200 pounds per person per year. That's a big pile of stuff, and, you know, we're running out of room to put it, and I, so just food for thought.
I, I love the idea.
Not, not to change anything tonight.
No, absolutely.
I love it.
We, we will welcome that in the next rate changer, even if the direction is to do it now, we will try to figure something out.
Yeah, just one quick question. Can you go over those numbers again, what the metro rate was and what it's going to be?
So the metro rate.
137.
The metro rate in 2022 was $123.45. In 2023, it will be $137.30. Since 2020, it's gone up like 35%. It's, it was $98.35 in 2020. So their rate has increased dramatically.
Thank you.
And disposal is our, is our largest cost component by far.
So that's for mixed solid waste. So that's not for clean wood, not for yard debris, not for residential organics or anything like that. It is for mixed solid waste.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Well, I have known B&amp;B since before I was a commissioner. I served on something called the Rate and Fee Committee, and I was listening to them then, and I remember a former mayor saying, when, when the owners had to come in and ask for a significant price, he said, "Please come in and ask incrementally and do it as you go." And when I look at the cost of operations having gone up, whether it be fuel, equipment, personnel, if you look at the Metro South thing alone, that's not a, that's not a nine, that's an 11% increase. They didn't even cover that in what they're asking for. So in my mind, in the world of, and, and plus the additional services they now offer, not even counting, you know, green disposal, like grass and cardboard and recyclables and stuff. So when I look at the bills that I pay every month, in the world of services provided to citizens, this is a best buy, and I've got no problem approving what I see here tonight.
Thank you for sharing.
Yeah, and I will say, say the same thing. Have no issues with the rate increase. The partnership with Oregon City and B&amp;B has been going for a long, long time and has always been a great partnership, and have always been fair with the rate, so.
So my questions start off with, how do I get the purple box? I don't have one. Obviously, I want one.
Well, we'll get Esther to set you up.
Okay, I'll call Esther. Esther's my, Esther's my, she's, you know, call in, call Esther, she'll take care of it. Some of the things that, could you go back to that slide? So some of the things on that list, I am hoping. Yeah, the, the recycle plus. So I am hoping, I'm not sure, but maybe you can tell me in a later meeting. I know that they're, the state law passed that they're outlawing the Styrofoam containers, and I cannot wait because I think that they are really wasteful. The other thing is that we've got those clear clam shells, and that, I think those are a little bit of a problem. So I, I'll just say for the record, I am a 20-gallon can person. So I think that Mike's on to something because I think the less that you throw away, we compost at home, and so I can't wait for the, for the residential food waste. So we have a, we have a black container that we got from the county, and we do composting at home. So I try to, for me personally, try to minimize as much as I possibly can. If there are three bags in my can, it's, it's pretty rare. I probably have two small bags. Sometimes because I'm picking up trash in the neighborhood, I might have a third bag. But I, I think, Mike, you're on to something. Apartment complexes are completely different story, and I go by some of the apartment complexes and I see some of the stuff out there that gets thrown away, and my mind just gets exploded because I'm thinking, why is this sitting here? You know, why, you know, again, that's, the multiple-family recycling program, I think the county needs to step that up to get to these people to say, "Look, you know, you're part of the stream too, and you can't be, you move out, you can't just leave everything that you own." And then there are lovely residences, and if you're out there, sorry, but people leaving stuff on the curb somewhere on a main street that somebody's supposed to magically take away. I've seen couches, big screen TVs, somebody comes by and busts in the screen, you know, I mean, what do you do with that? So please don't do that. Please call the appropriate party and get them picked up, and don't leave them on the curbs on Malala or Seventh or wherever they're curbs on Malala or Seventh or wherever they're leaving them. So I, I think, to take your comment one step further, Mr. Mitchell, Commissioner Mitchell, I agree with you. I think that we should start, and I'm not speaking for myself, I think we should start incentivizing people who are trying to do the right thing and keeping stuff out of the, you know, waste stream. And that's a bigger topic because it has to do with shopping and all of that and what you're buying and what you're, you know, sending. And our industry unfortunately is not very good and it's, we're overpackaged, everything is overpackaged, drives me crazy. But if that's, is that something that could be considered? I'm not saying, I know you said, well, if you want us to change it now, I, I don't know if that's going to be helpful, but it's something I think we need to take a look at and maybe we can make an amendment, can we amend this in a year or so and say, hey, we need, we've figured out how we could do this to make it an incentive for people who, who use less garbage and take less, you know?
I, I think we can come back in a year with a different rate structure, looking at that particular theme and seeing what, how users and how the economics work to see what, what we could do better.
Thank you, Mike, for bringing it up because it was kind of something I thought about too. So anyway, I, I will say to continue what you said, I have just been, over the years that I've lived here, which is now really a lot, been impressed with our garbage service. It is all the new things that you've taken on, your commitment to the community as a company, the commitment to the region, working these things out with, with Metro and with the county. And they have a great recycling program too. Again, we'll get them to step this up a little more. But I think Oregon City is doing its, its share to be equitable and I, I don't have any issue with the rate structure. I think it's fair and I know we probably wouldn't be here, but we had a presentation earlier that we knew Metro was going to change the rate. So, and I understand all of that. So I, I really, you know, again, thank you so much for all you do for the community. This is reasonable. I, you know, I, if you wanted more, I'd say yes, go, I'd, I'd be supporting more, but we're looking at our, our community as well and everything we can do to sort of minimize the amount of stuff going out to Boardman and Arlington. But the region has to do its share, it can't just be, can't just be us, so we all have to do that, but.
I move to approve resolution number 2321, adjustments of the legislation disposal rates effective September 1st, 2024.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Adam Marle?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
They're calling you.
Aye, yes, aye, sorry.
And Mayor Denise McGriff.
Aye. I think you did it telepathically.
I didn't know we were having a race.
He did it telepathically.
Thank you guys.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thanks for the kind words.
All right, last but not least on the agenda tonight is item number, it's now going to 9D, Men Run With Understanding for sports fields. And Jonathan, thank you so much for being here, filling in. Mr. Conkell.
So tonight, Mr. Waverly presenting the revised memorandum of understanding with the Oregon City Youth Sports and the Oregon City Soccer. As you may recall, we held a work session, several meetings concerning the memorandum of understandings with these organizations that utilize our fields and facilities. So in the proposed draft based on the discussions at the work session, we have prepared the A memorandum of understandings for both organizations with a $3 per hour, per field fee for the commission to consider.
Anything you want to add, Jonathan?
No, we're just here and if you guys have any questions or concerns or anything, I think that, you know, we're committed to continue to work with Oregon, Oregon City Youth Sports and Oregon City Soccer Club to utilize our fields the best ways that we possibly can, so.
Were they notified to be here tonight?
Yes.
Without seeing any support letters from the, either of the two organizations or without having anything in the report explaining the work that's been done with both organizations to come to this memorandum of understanding, I have no awareness that there was any negotiation with these two groups other than to just come back with this, another proposal. If I'm wrong, tell me or show me.
We, we don't, we don't have, we're, we're seeking the approval to, to move forward. You know, we, we halted all memorandums of understanding. That was kind of the, the point that we were at and we, we discussed the fees and now we're seeking to move forward with the negotiations of the memorandums of understanding. And I think that the, with Oregon City Youth Sports and Oregon City Soccer, it's, it's going to be a back and forth and we'll come to an agreement before all memorandums of understanding are, are signed.
Further comment?
Yes. So when you read this report, it says that this MOU is effective upon the signing of the parties. The copy provided to us is unsigned. I don't think, I know it doesn't. I, I spoke with Oregon City Youth Sports. This, this MOU, it really doesn't reflect how youth sports operate. It talked about cancellations and scheduling and it's such a complex MOU that I think it's going to require pretty extensive administration by both the city and any sports organization. Another thing is I don't see, I make it for one year, you know, one year and then we'll be back here in another year. Why don't we do a three to five year agreement that we can agree upon and put this thing to rest? And I know there's a, there's a power differential between Oregon, between the city of Oregon City and any youth sports organization because the city has it, the youth sports want it. So, you know, I don't know if this was a collaboration or a dictation and you say we're going to move, you're asking us to approve something, but I, I honestly feel what you said is correct. There needs to be a collaboration between, before any agreement is signed, that what works for both parties. And I don't see this, I see this being labor intensive on the part of the city and labor intensive on the part of the sports organizations, short-term thing that we'll see again in less than a year. I think this thing, my advice would be do nothing tonight, sit down with these organizations, refine this agreement to make it more user friendly and less demanding of personnel and then come back. So I read it and I'm, I'm not prepared to move forward with it as written. Thanks.
Anybody else have any comments before I go back? We did agree on the $3 fee. We said that, that we made that decision. So I recall us doing that.
Well, I don't know if we did agree on that.
Yeah, we did.
I think that's why we're bringing.
I agree with you. Yes, we did do it.
We had a discussion in a work session and there seemed to be consensus at a, an amount. It seemed to be $3. So we put $3 in here to be brought back in a regular meeting for the commission to vote and provide us the direction on what the fee per hour is going to be, whether it's zero, $3, a different hourly rate. But at some point we need that direction in an official capacity because, you know, the, the last discussion was in a work session where we don't make decisions.
That's right, as we well know.
Yep, so that's what we're, we're moving, we're bringing.
We'll poll the commission and see what, if there's, who's at $3 and who's at zero.
I've got a, I've got a question. I, I just want to make sure of something that I'm reading. So with, with all of the hours that are listed on both of those agreements, at $3 an hour, bottom line on the staff report, budget impact, $12,964 based on 2022, 2023 reservations. So if we implement both of those agreements and they use the hours that are listed there, it's going to raise $13,000?
That's correct. Based on historical?
Based on, okay.
Similar usage.
So I'm, I'm really torn. I still believe philosophically that there is a value to being able to reserve park space. But $13,000 isn't worth arguing over.
So I think you'll spend more than that administering the program.
That, that would be my concern.
That's what I think, looking at it.
I'm not going with zero. It costs something.
I, I'm not saying zero.
And you and I were agreement, it's consensus for, for a number.
Yeah, exactly. But that, the first time I have seen a, a figure as low as $13,000 is tonight.
Well, my, my rationale for supporting this isn't because of any funding that's going to be coming into the park system to fix everything, because I recognize that that's not going to be the case. The reason why I support this, which is the rate that Commissioner Mitchell suggested at our work session, is for the reason that was just alluded to right there. I think that there ought to be, I think that there ought to be some sort of way to signify the reservations there. And nobody on this dais disagrees with the importance of youth sports. I, I participated in Oregon City Youth Sports growing up here and so nobody is disagreeing with that. It's just a matter of best practices in parks and recreation where you look at every other community that does this at a much higher rate. And again, I, like I said, I'm not looking to nickel and dime our residents. It, it's not for me about how much is going to be filling our coffers, it's about the philosophy of it.
And I would, I would again respond and I think the cost of administering this is going to exceed the revenue generated. And also would say that there are some things in the function of a city or any, any governmental organization that do not have to be cost justified, do not have to be a zero sum, do not have to recover all the costs. There are certain services you provide for the general welfare and for returns that you don't necessarily see, a sense of community and so many other things I've stated before. So if, if you're going to generate an MOU, I suggest not tonight, sit down with these organizations and say, what, what works for you, what works for us as a city to administer what appears to be a fairly complex program of reservations and I, that's where I'm at on it. And I'm not going to go back onto my other recitations about the value of youth sports and keeping youth busy. I still feel that way. Thanks.
Well, and I, I absolutely agree with the comment that there are services that government provides that are not zero sum and that's still the case with the scheme that's here with the $3. I, I wonder if Mr. Waverly has a response to the administrative burden that might be caused.
To have a, I mean, we're, we're reserving fields, whether it's through OCYS or other groups that would reach out to us, so.
I, I just, yeah, I have a hard time understanding the administrative burden.
Do, do you have someone within the city that the OCYS calls to make these arrangements?
Yes, every year we schedule their field usage. They send us a list and.
Is it, is it, is it our, our wonderful admin in parks that's doing, that's taking care of this?
Yes.
And it will be happening regardless of if we do this or not?
Right. I mean, there's some portion of an FTE and I don't know what that is, is going to take care of us. And I don't think, I don't think $13,000 gets you a whole bunch in the world of public.
Well, then let's jack it up then.
But, but the, the point is they're already doing that. They're already making reservations and cancelling rainouts and, yeah, so this, this isn't an additional burden.
So I think we've had enough discussion on this, so I'm ready to make a motion.
I agree with you.
To approve item 9B, the memorandums of understanding for sports fields.
Second.
One more comment.
Sure.
So to me, it's not, we can debate the price back and forth all we want, but until those two organizations are in the room saying the city weren't with us to come to an agreement and we are supportive of it and we weren't forced to sign it, which we still haven't seen. And the fact that they're not here tonight kind of makes me assume that what we'll do tonight is we'll make a decision, we'll hear from them to say, hey, we were forced to do this or we didn't get a choice, or that the staff will say to them, the commission said this is the final decision and you got to follow it, which is what's going to happen? So I'm going to know until I find.
So why aren't they here?
Well, that's a good question. Either they weren't invited or they were, I don't know. The staff says they were. They might be here because they couldn't be here, they might be here because they don't agree with it, any of the number of factors. But knowing the issues with these MOUs in every group that I've talked to, it comes down to the relationship with the city and whether they were treated or negotiated right or whatever. And until I see any of these groups say, hey, this was fair, we concede to it, I'm not voting for any of them.
I would just once again add or reiterate a comment I made in past conversations about this, which I understand the power differential and the need to work collaboratively. And I, I don't know the dynamics necessarily of what it's been between our park staff and the Oregon City Youth Sports and the other groups. But I'll also add that while it's important to maintain, maintain a good customer service, it's also important to note that this is our property. And in the same way that the federal government and the state government and the local government maybe does not give us the best customer service when they take money from our pocketbooks every year to pay federal taxes, state taxes, local taxes for things that we are required to do. I do not see this as something that's different than that. This is a part of operating a government. We had someone come here requesting essentially a deferral of SDCs further. We're not, we are not requiring them to, or we are requiring them to pay the SDCs because that's a part of operating in Oregon City. And so I see it as something no different than that.
Well, I'm basing my decision based on a knowledge of the interaction with these groups, which you claim that you maybe don't have them, so that's the difference.
And I'm going to, I'm going to.
Call for the vote.
No, wait a minute. I'm going to concur with Commissioner Smith. If you vote, yes vote on this tonight, puts this document into effect as written. It doesn't give direction to, we're giving direction to you to work in collaboration with these organizations and come up with the most feasible, workable document that all parties involved can do. And that's where I think this needs to go. So I concur with Commissioner Smith.
Did you like to make an amendment to that, to the motion?
Well, I'm not going to vote yes on this because then it puts it into effect, so.
Well, we can make, we can go back and would you be willing to amend?
We can give direction to the.
Amend your, amend the motion?
To, to do what?
To amend the motion. He's talking about making sure that every, I mean, communication is a two-way street. I agree that we as a city need to take the first step and do communicate, but if they were communicated and we don't hear anything, my expectation is, well, okay, is your silence mean you don't care or you didn't get the, I mean, I believe that you did reach out to them and tell them that, gee, be here, or they could have communicated to you, we can't come, but we want to do this, we want to do that.
Yeah, well, we, we plan on, like I said, we plan on meeting with both groups. OCYS had their board meeting on Sunday.
Have you met with them since this draft came out?
What's that?
Have you been meeting with them before this draft came out?
This was sent to them, I don't, I don't recall the date that it was sent, but it was sent to them. The response that we got back from OCYS was that they had their board meeting and it was going to be this Sunday and that we would be hearing back from them, so.
I'd be willing to add an amendment that they work this out and then come back with signed documents.
My thought is the same as Commissioner Smith. You walk in this room with those other two organizations, the three, you sit down and say, we have a workable document, you got a yes vote, but not tonight, not for me.
The issue has been the fee. The issue has been the fee. It's been zero. We need direction from the commission on what they would like the fee to be. Now whether someone in an organization wants to accept that or not is a decision that they need to make.
The issue is more than the fee, Mr. Conkell. The issue is how those operations conduct business, what they have to do in the event of a cancellation, what lead time they have to do.
That's not part, that's not part of our project, that's not part of our.
It's part of this agreement.
Let's go for the vote or remove it.
All right, go for the vote, I don't care.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
No.
Commissioner Adam Marle?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
No.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
No.
And Mayor Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Motion fails.
So can we have a motion on the, setting the fee at $3? And then going, having them come back and work out all the other stuff?
I would move that.
Second.
Why would we separate that from the entire package? I mean, it's a package as a whole.
I, I don't want to get into the minutia of. I, I don't want to get into the minutia of how the Parks Department schedules them for fields. That's, I read this, that's, I don't think that that's something that I need to get into the weeds about. That's, this is the way the city does it, and this is the way they've always done it. Apparently, it's been somewhat satisfactory, but I think there's other things in here that they probably need to be sitting down. If they're meeting on Sunday, you know, if anybody from this group is, is, you know, please communicate, please let us know what's going on, because this.
Which was the 16th.
Yes.
It's already happened.
Oh, they had their meeting, oh, this past Sunday. Okay, I thought you said this Sunday.
No, it was last Sunday was their meeting.
So, do we know what happened?
Um, we have the report that they want to schedule a meeting to meet with us. I think some of the concerns were that the president has changed, and we had the previous president's name. I mean, those are miniscule things that I think we can work through together.
Absolutely, absolutely, I agree.
Yep.
It goes further than that. It's about how those organizations conduct their day-to-day operations versus what this document calls for them to do, specifically lead times or rescheduling of fields. That's the perspective, that the right thing to do is sit down with these two groups, hammered out, walk in this door and say, hey, we got something that works for all of us. And then you get your yes vote, and you're done.
I still tend to agree with Commissioner Marl. These fields belong to everybody, and if they want to reserve them, there is a program and a process to do that. It's not, their, their fields are not theirs. They belong to the entire city of Oregon City. So, we have been generous and gracious to allow them to do this here. Looking at what all the other cities charge, it's just like, wow. I, I, I wish that we could get that amount of money, too, because I know what other people are charging, so. Want to vote? Yes, I second it.
Just to confirm, there was a motion by Commissioner Marl, second by Mayor McGriff, for the $3 fee. Is that correct?
Yes, and then they will come back with everything else at the next meeting. Or whenever they get together.
From which to satisfy what Commissioner Smith and O'Donnell are saying about having that further conversation, we need to at least have a formal adopted rate from the city commission.
Right.
In order to do that.
Which is what, which is what Mr. Conkell has asked us for. So, we'll do that, you'll go back, meet with these folks.
Yep.
We might do that, we'll see if the vote.
Well, I, I think, I hope that they'll do it regardless. So, go ahead, Mr. Waverly.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
No, they can't do it.
Mr. Mitchell, do you have, did you want to say one word?
Yeah. Given the importance of what these two groups do for our city, for our youth, I don't, I don't want us to dictate terms. I, I think it deserves a negotiation. I also think there's a value to being able to reserve fields. But I think it's important that, that it be a negotiation and not a dictation by the city, recognizing what these two groups in particular do. So, I can't support the amendment.
Well, I'm going off your recommendation at the consensus, which that we charge $3, that's all we're saying.
And, and if you go back and listen, I said, I'm going to throw out $3 as a thought starter.
And we thought about it.
So, are we going to be negotiating with every single?
I'm not negotiating the fee.
We're in the middle of a vote. One vote has been taken. Carry on with the call. Roll call.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
No.
Commissioner Adam Marl?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
No.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
No.
Mayor Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Motion fails.
Thank you. We're not negotiating the fee.
Do we negotiate anything else for any other reservations?
No, no, we don't.
I just, I don't understand that.
I'm not asking them to tell us what we think they should be charged, because they're going to say, well, we don't think we should be charged anything. And that is not right. I agree with you, there is a value to having a reservation. If not, I mean, let's just shut all the fields down, and nobody can reserve anything.
Well, I think the matter's decided for tonight.
Yeah, so, and plus, if you two want to discuss it, great, but the meeting is over, unless we have something else.
No, the meeting is not over.
Well, let's get it over with. Let's go.
Mr. Conkell, do you have any communications for us this evening?
I do not.
Mr. Marl, do you have any communications? Uh, Mr. Mitchell, you were giving a little resuscitation, not recitation, a recitation about your meeting that you had at 7:30. Not a resuscitation.
Well, resuscitation, resuscitation's more accurate.
I needed the resuscitation.
You probably needed it after the meeting. Yes, I would, I would agree with that.
I guess I'm confused, because I thought we covered those in, in our work sessions. So, I, I didn't bring my notes.
I know, I'm just saying, we have communications, and maybe that's communication.
Not tonight.
Mr. O'Donnell?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Smith? Okay, I have a request. So, those of you who are aware, the League of Oregon Cities' annual meeting is coming up on October 12th, 13th, and 14th. I would like to know who is interested in going, so that we can make arrangements.
Where is it?
It's in Eugene. It's going to be held at the Grad, I'm not really, I think I know which hotel, I think it changed its name, but it's called The Graduate in Eugene. And registration already has opened, and things are going to get filled up pretty fast. I will just say for the record, I will be attending the OMA, Oregon Mayor's Association meeting, which is the day before, but I have vacation planned for the rest of it. And so I will not be able to attend the main conference, but I'll attend the mayor's portion, which is on the 12th. Mr. O'Donnell, you, no.
No.
Mr. Smith? Okay.
Wish I could, but I'm not available.
Okay.
I would, I will check on that.
Okay, all right, can you get back to me? Okay, thank you, all right. Being no further business, we're going to adjourn to, let's take a five-minute break and adjourn at 9 for the executive session.